I'll call the meeting to order. The public session, please stand for the same pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I don't think anyone's signed up for the rest of his comments. So we'll move on to consensus agenda items.
Quick presentation.
On the online version?
Let her see.
Oh, all right, we'll have it right here then, go ahead.
Okay, great. I'd like to call Allison Davis to do a quick presentation. What's that?
Yeah?
Yeah, please. Do you want me to work the PowerPoint?
It's about the...
Presentation on equalization rates.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to do a little presentation on equalization rates and hopefully educate some of you on how this works. So I'm calculating the tax rates, we can go through some of this. So the equalization rate formula is basically the total assessed value of the municipality divided by the total market value of the municipality. That equals the rate of equalization. Here are some examples. So if your equalization rate is 100, it means the town is assessing you at 100% of market value. Most likely, a reassessment was done in recent years. And your property's assessment is roughly the same as its market value or the price for which you get if you sell your property. If the equalization rate of the town is less than 100, the property in the town is assessed less than market value. So the lower the equalization rate, the longer it has been since a reassessment has taken place. An example is an equalization rate of 43 means the overall property in the town is assessed at 43% of market value. So when you sell your house, you could sell it for more than 43%. Your assessment is 43% of that sales value. If the equalization rate is greater than 100, the overall property in the town is assessed higher than the market value. The property values may have decreased since the last assessment, but assessments were not adjusted downward. Why are equalization rates necessarily necessary in New York State? Each municipality determines its own level of assessment. In contrast to other states where there's one level of assessment statewide. There's, in New York State, hundreds of taxing jurisdictions and most school districts and counties share the same taxing boundaries as the cities and towns that are responsible for assessing the properties. So equalization rates are necessary to equalize the taxes across the towns or the taxing jurisdiction. In order to distribute school district or county taxes among multiple municipalities, the level assessment must be equalized to the full market value so that the taxes are equally distributed. So that means you take the total assessed value of your municipality divided by the equalization rate for the entire municipality, and that equals the full value of the municipality. And if all municipalities were assessed at 100% of market value, then equalization rates wouldn't be necessary because it would all be equal. Once the full market value of each municipality is determined, the school district or county can determine how much in taxes should be collected from each of the municipalities. And this just, the Department of Taxation and Finance states that of most of New York State, more than 700 school districts distribute their taxes among several municipalities, many of which have different levels of assessment. The number of municipal segments in a school district ranges from one to as many as 15. The Niagara-Weetfield School District has four municipalities, four towns within district boundaries. And I've listed here the towns and the equalization rates. So what that says is for every one of those towns, because it's below 100%, that your sales value or your market value is greater than your assessed value. Just to be clear, equalization rates do not correct unfair assessments within a municipality. So they measure the level of assessment for the entire municipality. They're not intended to correct unfair assessments in a city or town. That would be something you'd have to go back to your assessor to fight. And usually in municipalities, there are forms that you fill out and there's a process to follow. The assessor has a primary role in ensuring the fairness of the individual assessments. The more frequently properties are reassessed based on current market values, more likely it'll be the assessments are fair. Property owners also have a role to ensure that their individual assessments are fair. And again, if you feel your assessment isn't valid or correct, you go, there's a process usually listed on the town's website whereby you file, usually it's a form, reassessment evaluation form, and then there's a process each town follows. Okay, equalization rates are based on local data. So the assessment roles include the municipal level of assessment typically listed as a uniform percentage of value. Equalization rates are determined by analyzing that level of assessment. And based on national standards, the assessor's offices they're talking about here review the level of assessment to determine if it's within adequate tolerances to be used as the equalization rate. And then they go on to say, in municipalities where they can confirm the level of assessment, they use their own independent estimate of total market value to determine the equalization rate. Equalization rates are all set by the local municipalities, all set by the towns and the assessor's offices. Other uses of equalization rates, they're used to establish tax and debt limits, allocation of costs for other operations within the municipality, determination of state assessments, and you can read the list going down there. Determination of level of star exemptions, which does relate to school district taxes. A portion of sales tax revenues, and the assessment in equity and small claims assessment will be hearings. So here's an example. If school district AB needs to raise a million dollars through property taxes, so they have a levy of a million dollars. The district contains all of town A and all of town B, so 100% of town A and 100% of town B. Each town has a total assessed value of $10 million. The $1 million levy, if the levy were allocated on the basis of the assessed values, the taxpayers would be split evenly. So they each pay $500,000 because each has a total assessed value of $10 million. However, the two towns have two different levels of assessment. Town A has an equalization rate of 33.33 and town B has an equalization rate of 50%. And I, just so you know, I changed in the formula the 33.33 to 30 to make it a little easier. So here's the formula that they use. So you take the assessed value of each town, which is $10 million, and the equalization rate, and you multiply that. So 10 million times .3 is $30 million. That's the market value for town A. And the market value for town B is 10 million times .5 or 50%, which is 20 million. So the total market value of AB together is $50 million. And the percent of market value and the percent of levy then would be 60% for town A and 40% for town B. So that is, that percentages calculated by dividing $30 million, the market value of the town, divided by the total of both towns to come up with 60%.
Allison?
Yes.
Where do you get the market value of the town? Who creates it?
The market value of the town is from the assessor's office. We get the list of the market values and the assessed values from the towns. So it's the assessor's office, and I think they develop those dollars based on local sales and stuff.
Now, the equalization rate, which is say 50%, based on the sale of homes in a particular community, could that fluctuate? Or would there be a question?
The equalization rate?
Yeah, 50%, 48%, you know, different.
The equalization rate is basically based on the assessments, the town's assessments. So if the town assessor is not assessing the property annually or often, it affects the equalization rates.
But is that a moving number?
Yeah, every year it changes, yes.
Based on the number of new assessments?
Correct.
So it could be 60% and then it could go down. And maybe to your question, dealing with home sales, very often when you have home sales, there's some reassessment. So when, if you have that change of turnover, it could be affecting in that way.
Market value, correct.
Yeah, because we're just saying that community, there's been a lot of homes that went for sale sold much higher than they're assessed. So because of that, that equalization rate could fluctuate.
The market value would fluctuate, yeah, so it would affect the, correct, the equalization rate.
Okay.
Yeah, the change in the town's total market value relative to other towns can cause the town's share of the levy to increase or decrease. So if one municipality's market value increases but all the other municipalities in the taxing jurisdiction increase to a larger degree, then the first municipality's share of the tax levy will decline. Because they're not being raised at the same rate.
But the point of equalization is to equalize everything.
Correct.
Within Wheatfield, town of Niagara, I'm assuming, right?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, so if, if whatever community is assessed for 100% and there's a $200,000 home in that community, the other community is assessed for 60% of $200,000 home, would they still be paying the same school tax?
No, probably not, because the equalization rate is different in the one town than the other, which affects the tax recalculations.
And that's why up-to-date assessments is something that we tend to push.
And the way you'll see that is if you look at what the, that one part of the slide where it says how much per thousand assessed value, in the equalization rate where one was $60 per 1,000, the other one's $40 per 1,000, they'll show you right there, $100,000 home, you're going to have one paying $600 and one paying $400 in each of the communities. So you have the same, the same home that has the same market value or same assessment, assessed value will not have the same tax.
Well, they're equal, it's not actually equalizing.
The equalization rate, the way that we learned when I did the fiscal, the fiscal management training, Sue Villiers explained it to us really well, that this is just the figure of this. It's not the houses equalizing between each community, it's the entire share that each of the communities pay for those. There, so you're equalizing the towns, not the houses, individual taxpayers.
Correct.
And then, and then the changes in assessment within your town will affect the amount that you pay within your town, but not compared to the others.
Right.
So a town with a lower equalization rate, let's say 50%, would have more of a school tax increase than some of that at 100%.
Not necessarily, not necessarily, it depends on, there's so many other factors, right? Within the town itself also matters. So like if your market value goes up within the town, that affects the rate. If your assessments are changed, that affects the rate. There's like a whole bunch of things, it's not just town to town, it's within the town too.
Right.
So once the town's share is, once the town, each town's share of the levy is assigned or calculated, then within that town, the rate is determined on the assessment, assessed values of the properties.
We give the example, it was about six years ago, all, three of the towns, Cambria, Lewiston, and Wheatfield had a tax increase. And because of the equalization rate, there was actually a decrease in the town of Niagara by a couple dollars per thousand. And so when, you know, when that happened, people's, the tax share, the tax burden, I would say, from that one town would obviously decrease for this person versus the other, the other many towns. Yeah, and so it's been all over the place. I know there was a year that Wheatfield's was almost triple what the, you know, increase was versus some of the other ones. So it all depends again on that assessment and that market share that's going on. And I might be, right now, I know the fancy math, I remember listening to Tom Ford in Wheatfield. What, a lot of these homes are selling way above market value right now. You know, there's, you know, there's a sale. If neighbors down the street wanted, you know, theirs, theirs got into a bidding war on the first day they put it up. And they, they went for 50,000 above what their asking price was. Still don't know how you get a mortgage for that, but, because the banks are taking a major risk, but yeah, that.
So that'll affect the full market value of the properties, which in turn will affect.
So that town could then have a greater share of the tax in, if you have four municipalities, right? And if that was happening throughout that particular town, they would have, they would have a greater share to pay.
Correct, yes.
Does that, does that help? All right, thank you. Little bit more after we're using, yes. And I forget for tax assessments too, it's a combination of what you say and what they say. Thank you, Allison.
You're welcome.
All right, moving along here then, I could call for motion to accept the consensus agenda items as submitted.
So move.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those abstaining, motion carries. All right, call for motion to accept personnel items as submitted. There's after second. Moving seconded, anything to separate or discuss? All right then, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those abstaining, motion carries. All right, Capitol Project Committee.
I was hoping we could select a date for the Capitol Project Committee to meet. We can meet, kind of go over where we are with the current project phase one at committee end and then kind of tie line that's established now for phase two. A couple of dates, I was thinking if we were going to try to do them before or maybe around 5:00, either October 7th and November 4th.
Could we do the later date, just because the way things are with still opening schools and things getting, it's a little crazy right now.
The majors I work with, Julie and Melissa, for Cap, what's that, November 4th?
It's a big box on the side.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, we'll, we'll send something out.
All right, Policy Committee.
We had a meeting prior to this meeting, went over, we have five or six policies that will be ready to be our next meeting.
Hey, question, I'll go to Dan if you don't mind.
Thank you.
All right. There was a general question through the board presence forum on NISBA, asking about how we've adjusted technology policies within rising COVID. And do we do any adjustments or with, you know, personal, personal device use, personal cell phone? This is just a category that was in, personal cell phone use, you know, obviously kids' use and staff use of those things.
So we didn't have anything in our policy that prohibited that, so we, practice wise, we allow for it. But I think a couple of important things that we've done, you've done as a group actually, was allowing us to move up the purchase of our devices that should be coming in in November, beginning in December. As the, I think in addition, 600 devices for the district were very important. We also have hotspots, the, to some of our families particularly, test coordination and boosters. So those are things that, you know, practice wise, we've changed, we haven't had to change anything policy wise. That said, last year, we may have had to, if last year we didn't add that digital citizenship piece to our code of conduct, which I think was, you know, very important. That's something that we can draw on now when we face this challenge of everybody being online again.
All right, we have a couple of items for informational there, the soccer booster club fundraisers.
Can I just ask you to make a comment about the Audit Committee and just remind people that it's meeting October 7th?
Sure, October 7th Audit Committee, who are my audit members? Allison's buying a smiley cookie, she'll freeze him for that meeting. Informational items, we have the two soccer, soccer booster club meeting item, soccer booster club fundraiser items. There are car wash on the 26th and raffle ticket sales from 23rd to the 10th, or 23rd to 23rd of September, October. Early graduation informational item that's also listed there. All right, I'd like to have our superintendent introduce our ex-official, our new ex-official board member.
It is my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Arcony, who will be our student liaison to the board of education this year. It's a crucial role, we talked about it a little bit earlier. It is an opportunity for all of us in the particular board to get some insight into what our students are experiencing throughout the course of the year. I don't think there's ever been a year that's been, and I know there isn't, more unusual than this one since I've been in education. So the student perspective, perspective on all these things will be really important, so welcome.
Thank you.
So next meeting, you'll have to get a report.
Okay.
And for, you know, reading purposes, for some of the old guys here, they want it double spaced, so they, they type.
Tell her you're kidding.
I'm kidding. I'll just move on with my report then. I want to say that it's been obviously an interesting opening across the entire state with schools, let alone just individual districts. I want to say that is, this has not been an easy time for obviously, not just administrators, but teachers and support staff with the amount of changes that have gone on here. And I concur, after talking to many parents, they just said that this is not, not the effort that we're putting forth as a school district with the education, but just a model. They said this is just not the model that is something to be permanent after all this abnormal time act. And we know that the governor had made a, made remarks that, you know, hey, we got technology, we can go online, why do we need to have, you know, so many teachers in schools and so on? Any person in education that thinks that this is a good idea to continue past the COVID, you know, time really shouldn't be in education. This, this is not, this is not the way to educate children. It, I made a comment a few months ago that said that there's a reason why the online schools, virtual online schools that are advertised on TV and you hear about in other states are not done here is because they don't work. It is not a great model for kids to learn on. And I really feel bad for, you know, some of the, some of the kids that are sitting there in the computer for hours on end on those other days to sit and learn. And the teachers have done, you know, they have worked probably the hardest in, in years in preparation of not planning their lessons, but learning new technology in a very short period of time. I know that people keep saying, why, you had six months to prepare for this, why aren't we more prepared? It's not, that's not the problem. The problem with it is, is that you cannot foresee all the issues when you fully use a software package or a technology package that is going to occur when everyone using it and having everyone, you know, give feedback in the form of, you know, either video interaction or lessons coming back in, what's going to happen there? It takes a lot of trial and error. And I, I talked to a couple of the newer teachers, not just in our district here, but also my own district I teach in. I said, hey, what's the college prep programs looking like right now? And they said, we get one technology class. And in today's day and age, you just can't have it. I mean, technology is, granted, the, the virtual component of it is, it's not the norm, but the use of technology in the classroom with, with, you know, very emergent technologies of smart boards, projectors. You know, it's no longer just a, back like what he taught, you know, a, a, you know, an overhead projector or, you know, maybe when Focucci was in the classroom with the ditto machine, you know, so. So I mean, technology has obviously moved past that point. And I, I, I really worry that with these educators that they're producing, that, you know, a lot of the college prep programs really need to take a hard look at what they're doing with this, during COVID right now and say, we need to rethink things. It goes back to my own personal views, not with board, that anyone who is a professor in a college prep program, there's no reason that if you have not been in a college, in a classroom teaching for 20 years, you shouldn't be there preparing teachers, because it's, you don't have the experiences and everything that go on and to really prepare them for, for teaching. And I mean, we, yeah, handful of teachers and it's like, okay, nothing, nothing prepared us for any of this. You know, just your normal classroom management has gone out the window. One of the things I talked to superintendent about over the course of the past month or so was what our Secretary of Education for the, for the country has put forth with her own rule version for the CARES Act funding. And I know that we're very happy that when there were two federal judges, one in DC and one in Oregon, that, that over, that put a stay on her rules that were created on there. And if you don't know what that is, that piece of it is, is that she changed the formulaic, the normal formula that Congress puts out for sharing federal funds. And so instead of it being, you know, with, based on poverty, going to private institutions for those schools, those students that are in poverty ratios, she's saying that was for all students the money. And basically for some states, it turned it into, flipped the ratio of 75% going to public school, 25 private, to 25% public school, 75 private. And they, they, I, just the other day, and I know we had this from NISBA also, that, you know, the judge in DC overruled that said it's not what Congress intended. I didn't have a chance to talk to you yet, how, if, you know, because I know that we got the guidance out from the state about that. And how did, how did that affect us with, it changed things greatly with, with our share?
We haven't seen that, those numbers yet. So they'll probably be in the next round if we see an impact, yeah. Well, you know, can I just, you know, I think that though, that whole idea of this next round of funding that the, that Congress is pushing back and forth about is a real concern because one of the things that the Secretary of Education remarked was that she really wanted the funding to only go out in the form of outdrifts, which is a very, very concerning thing for education, of course.
Which is, actually in New York State, it's really interesting because we don't offer vouchers in that form any地区 across the state. So, you know, the question is then, do we get, would we get any funding whatsoever in that regards? So I'm glad that, you know, as of right now, those rules that she had instituted are, are being overturned. But again, I worry about anything that does come in the future with that. And that's why I always, you know, no matter what side of the aisle that you're on, it seems like both sides right now are fighting the Secretary of Education with funding and stuff. And we need to make sure that we are lobbying, not just our own representatives from our area, but, you know, both, both sides of the aisle to say, hey, listen, when you make a rule in the Senate or in the, in the House with your, with your acts, make sure that it's upheld and not added a, you know, the secretary doesn't just add her own rules to it and hope this slip it through. That being said, I want to move it over to the superintendent.
Thank you. Quick, quick report on athletics. Athletics are scheduled to begin on September 21st. There's certainly been some information that we put out prior, there's more information coming. Again, I think we were all in our rap to see if athletics were really going to start. They will, certainly some sports have been moved back to a March 1st date. I was talking with some more members before the meeting today. I think you can look at that possibility as an opportunity. There's an opportunity maybe to play additional some sports that you couldn't play, won't do, or played before. So some students should perhaps before, in the choice between, let's say, football and soccer, could potentially help they both. And that's certainly a unique, very, very unique opportunity that usually doesn't present itself. We are looking for districts out there to participate with us and with our modified program, the NFL. I won't say all, but most of the other districts in the NFL are not going to be offering a modified program. So we're looking for some schools that we can compete with, athletic directors of Oregon and Alabama. can compete with, athletic directors of the organization now. Question was, was raised to me about cross-country, we, we do have our own cross-country course, we've used it in the past for our modified programs, we have one, our JV university programs on it, at this point we will, we won't have the multiple team meets, you'll just have dual meets, so we do have a course in which our students will be able to run on here. Transportation, this is a big one. We are, we're in need of drivers still, so if you know someone, if you'd like to drive yourself and you're out there, please get ahold of our district, you know, our HR office, you can hold correctly our Director of Transportation, if you have an interest, you want to talk a little about it, we held a job very recently and hired some, some drivers there, but we do need more drivers. We need drivers for two main reasons, one, we've had a number of retirees in the past month and month and a half in transportation. We also, and this is really important for everybody to know, we, we asked the community as part of the commitment forms, can you drive your children to school? The response rate was very high, we were very excited about that, and that certainly impacted our, some of the decisions that we made with regard to the programs that we're able to run. Since then, there've been a number of people, a fairly large number of people, who have backed away from that commitment of driving, yet now are, you know, requiring us to transport, and it's put us in a position where the number of drivers that we needed just a month ago after the commitment form, it, it's changed significantly. Just to give you an idea, if we're talking about just at the elementary level, a shift of, let's call it 220 students, just for the sake of this argument, includes about that, a 220 student shift at 22 kids per bus means how many buses? 10. Good, excellent. That's a lot of runs, right? So we're scrambling to get that ready for next week, Wednesday, won't be as creative as we need to be to make sure that we get, get off our kids here, but, but understand that, you know, that, that commitment piece is really important. And I say that not to call any parent out who all of a sudden needed transportation, but the answers that you gave informed our decisions, informed how the types of programs that we knew we could run and set up. And I also say it because in a few weeks, we will be putting something else out for Week 11 and beyond, and we're going to make, we need to make sure that the information that's provided is really accurate, because that won't determine what kind of program we have remaining here. As far as reopening is concerned, I want to stress again of something about food service. When it comes to food service, until December 31st, for all of our families, for all of our students, breakfast day and lunch is free. So if you are interested in taking advantage of that program, the district is reimbursed for those meals, we encourage you to do so, whether that means you come by and pick up the meals if you're not, if you're in the virtual program, or if you are not coming on a particular day because of your AB schedule, or if you're here, students who they come in the morning can get a breakfast every single morning, at least until December 31st. Again, there's no cost of that, okay, to our families. Any questions then, any on that before we move forward? Talked about this at the last meeting, pre-K, the 20% reduction that the governor talked about is also currently included in the pre-K grant money that we received. A question was asked at this meeting last time, whether or not we could have families, after the 10 weeks, supplement the other portion of that, and the answer is yes. So in other words, could, could we allow the same number of families to continue, not in essence have to flow down the program, and perhaps allow families to come up with the other 20% and stay in the program? The answer to that is yes. So that's going to take some more discussion here, and we'll, I'll put some stuff together for our next meeting. If the state comes through, then, and if their funds come through first, and it goes back to 100% funding, then we wouldn't need to do that. But it is a way to keep all of the families involved without having to utilize any more of our dollars than what we have to use in this, this 10-week period. On that 20% aid reduction, again, we spent quite a bit of time last time, so I don't want to reiterate too much, but I want you to know that it's still in place, that a 20% reduction our district is, you know, approximately, it's out at $1 million, significant dollars. The presidents of boards of education and superintendents have a legislative breakfast that's right now is scheduled for the end of September. The goal of that will be to make sure that all of our legislators know the impact of that 20%, that's a real important thing to that meeting.
Dave, did you say 7 million or 750,000?
So for the year is about 7.5 million dollars.
For the year?
For the 20, the 20% reduction of our stadium.
And that, that's October 4th is the actual date for the legislative breakfast that we're, we are actually hosting. I hope it is that day, because that's the day that we sent, wrong date, like on the wrong date.
Third.
Whatever that Saturday is, yeah.
Saturday.
Oh, Saturday 3rd, yeah. So, okay. So, yeah, that's, we're going to be hosting that, and obviously, we're trying to do it outside, for the simple fact that, that way we can have, you know, our entire board presence and superintendents there, along with the legislators, who's definitely have to be pressed, but we do have a secondary place moving inside if that, if we need to. And, and trust me, we're, all the boards are on the same page right now with this, because, I mean, how devastating this can be. With us, we're about 50, would you say it's about 50/50 state aid to tax ratio right now? Pretty close to that, right?
Yeah, it's, it's a little less, it's less than 50, it's less than 50.
I heard today that, or I read that NICE had filed suit against the governor, the state governor, and he apparently said, well, I'm not going to, stated he wasn't going to hold back on 20%, and the next payment due, and the payments due, and that it wasn't a, it wasn't a, how did he say it, it wasn't a reduction, but a holdback, basically, on what they've done so far, because he doesn't have the right to do that without legislative authority. So supposedly, things are going to be paid appropriately moving forward.
I'll believe it, I see it.
Yeah, and, and, you know, just to kind of do the, it has been all along, I think the right word, and it is withhold, that's what they've been calling it all along, with the idea that we, we'll never see it again, you know, that's been our concern all along. So if, if all that comes to fruition, that would be obviously great, that's what we've been hoping for all along.
Right. So again, quite right, as I mentioned, there's a lot of districts that, you know, obviously who are meeting this legislative breakfast that are effect worse than we are, you know, you look at the Falls, which is like an 80 to 20% ratio, state aid to, to tax ratio. So, you know, trust me, we're all, all the boards are on the same, same page with that. Any questions for the superintendent on his report? All right, items for board discussion at this time? Any old business? Anything new? Or quiet? Board member comments?
Welcome, Marissa. Good luck to you, and you all enjoy it, and Steve T. Slats, or like Julie said, just, just go with the flow, but you'll do well.
I will, thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, a thank you to our staff for the phenomenal opening so far, I know it's not easy in any regards to, to things going, sometimes going right, you know, you, you could leave at the day thinking everything's all planned and all stuff to go the next day, and the next day you come in and we were actually, I shouldn't say joking, but we were discussing, that, you know, having a little laugh about, what the one we have to deal with this, you know, you come in and the power's out, you know, it's, now it's going to throw everything into, into a little chaos.
Yeah.
So it, it did, luckily it came back on before we had to get back, I'm lying. I, I can't wait to hear what you're doing with snow days, because, I mean, Allison loves calling it snow days, and so, with the new rules on snow days, or option, I just know it is, it's a.
Yeah, no, I think that's actually, one of the points I forgot, so, so, there's now, this year there's a pilot, so if we have a day when we have to close school, we would have the opportunity to offer, you know, virtual remote learning on that day, and it wouldn't be a day that would come against us, it wouldn't be a day that would be made up, so, you know, I think particularly during this year, these consents, it could also, you know, potentially be something that we utilize moving forward, maybe snow days as we, as we've known in the past, we call it, we did very different.
But what, what would happen so the staff wouldn't come in?
So I, I, I think there's two different scenarios, one, in, in, let's say the bad weather, unsafe roads, you know, one of those days that we have, staff could stay home, could have their students join them, the line could do something, safe, for instance, safe learning, and that can become, it is a student attendance day. If, if on a cold other day, you know, so, staff could come in, they could teach them here, other students who may be standing off their bus, they could be learning all they can.
Now, as for teachers, what about like kitchen, cleaners, laborers, buses?
So they, like, like currently, where they can stay home on a day that was a bad other day, they have so many of those days that are actually going to come for their contract.
How, Lisa, I was going to ask that, actually, how, how has the, the pickup for lunches been with the program?
We've had approximately 200 people coming to get meals during, during these days so far, so it's a lower number than before, than we had going even this summer, but again, some of our students are here. So, again, again, I want to stress again, the meals right now are all free for all of our students, so we really want families to, to utilize them, to do that, because they're available.
Any other board member comments? All right, I'd like to call for motion to adjourn then. Is there a second?